All members are present. Thank you all for being here. Did I have a comment from a resident about getting the voting machine active? And unfortunately, was not able to get that possible for this council meeting, but we'll make sure that for future council meetings, we've got that up and running. So between Paul and Sue, we can get that happen, get that made possible again in March. Item three on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the Silent Prayer and invocation. Invite you to please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to the justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move into item number four on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is Attachment 1 and 2 in our packets. Council members, what are your wishes regarding the minutes of the previous meetings? I have a motion by Kellogg, second by Furkey. Any additions, corrections, or modifications to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That passes. Item number five is explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Anyone wishing to address the body may do so this evening after being recognized by a council member, in which they'll be invited to the podium and be allowed five minutes to speak on an item that appears before us on our agenda. Always remember to introduce yourself and make sure that the microphone is on so you can be picked up on the live stream or the recording. Item six is my report. Couple of items. Again, good evening to everyone joining us here, an audience who are watching from home. Want to update you on a number of items that I've worked on over the last month, some of which have been hot topic issues. And so I'll start with downtown property redevelopments. Last month, I mentioned that a salvager was selected following our request for proposals in the properties that we have taken ownership downtown across from the courthouse in what we're referring to as the Triangle area redevelopment. Salvaging activities, as I understand, will wrap up on the former USD and Sath buildings by the end of this month. And work has also begun to identify lead and asbestos in the East Town Plaza property, which the city acquired at the end of December. A report will be presented to council on this work, as well as next steps on the environmental activity that the DNR has been working with city staff on for your consideration and information in the coming weeks. Our researcher on aquatics has begun Phase 2 of their work. Phase 1, as a reminder, was focus groups in which community members were involved in gearing and sort of steering the work in the areas of concern that we'd like to question and research the public's opinions on. Yesterday, Phase 2 began, which included the phoning of 400 city residents. So if anybody gets a phone call either on the council, if you have a landline, or any residence, we encourage you to take the time to complete the survey, as that will best inform what we hope will guide our work as we go forward to decide what will be the future of aquatics in our community. The expected timeline for calling residents could take up to a week, and then it is anticipated that an email survey will be made available in the coming days for us to distribute. Following that, a community presentation is under consideration to fully inform residents of the findings, and that'll be scheduled as the survey progresses. It's also important to note that the original sort of timeline is a little bit shifted due to a few versions of the survey that we went back and forth to get language just right to accurately depict and reflect the concerns that we'd like to address on aquatics. Last month, talked about the Heroin and Opiate Subcommittee that was convened by Chief Hoyer. Next week, that group will again meet to continue to move through the pillared approach in addressing the issue facing the Wisconsin Rapids area. And just want to point that out, that that work continues to proceed. Just a couple of weeks ago, I joined a panel with the Grand Rapids Chairman, Arnie Nystrom, as well as County Supervisor, Hildy Henkel, on the issues and opportunities facing Wisconsin Rapids and the surrounding community. That group is comprised of leadership, individuals from area businesses that are engaged in a leadership program throughout the year. There's a couple of projects that are starting to begin their formation, one of which I'll be meeting on very soon and possibly maybe come for the council that they're interested in. The zoning rewrite project continues to move forward. Last night, the Planning Commission met for about two hours to talk about substantial changes to the zoning code and prepare for some of the work that will happen. As we know, the zoning code doesn't accurately reflect current development practices, and it's very cumbersome for anyone navigating the current zoning code, as much of it has been without a major overhaul for decades. And so watch for future Planning Commission agendas, or ask to be subscribed through the Clerk's Office to be included on Planning Commission agendas as that project continues to move forward. As a reminder, that is a multi-year project. Many months will go into that project, so the idea is to bring before the council batches of changes for your consideration, so it's more manageable, and we can have further dialogue and discussion about potential changes. Last week, the League of Wisconsin municipalities brought two board-appointed individuals to the Board. I was one of those, and pleased to join the Board that will represent 190 cities and 410 villages in Wisconsin. We do meet quarterly, so it is not a major time commitment, but very much an important Board. Major discussion on our Board meeting last week was the potential legislation that's moving through the state on the sale of municipal water utilities. Obviously, concern in the state of Michigan right now with their water crisis in Flint, but there is a lobby moving through states trying to allow the sale of municipal water utilities to private enterprise, and so something that the League of Municipalities actually took a change in stance to oppose that legislation. Something I discovered, it's kind of ironic, is I am the third consecutive Wisconsin Rapids mayor to serve on the Board of the League of Wisconsin municipalities. Came across the binders of former Mayor Carson and former Mayor Bach in my office not long ago, so nice to see Wisconsin Rapids has been represented on that Board for some years. Also attended Congressman Kind's listening session, which was also well-attended by community members. Congressman heard an update on a number of issues, such as the train issue, which has seen some relief because of the decline in really the demand of train usage as products and services, products haven't been moved as much, obviously attributed to the decline of oil prices and such. And I also shared perspective on Verso and the bankruptcy there. Congressman's been connected with leadership as well, but reiterated the importance of the federal government's interest in protecting the interests of domestic-produced paper. And as we know, the cheap foreign paper is not a, it challenges our domestic production, and certainly is an unlevel playing field for our producers here. This afternoon, I had a nice visit from Mayor Wiza from Stevens Point, talking about our efforts around our waterfront. He had some nice questions about why we, or how we continue to maintain some of our trails along the river in the winter months. He's gotten a lot of requests that Wisconsin Rapids is a community that makes available their rec trails, and why can't the city Stevens Point, so it's nice to share some perspective on that. Also spent some time this afternoon with the new CEO at Aspirous River View Hospital in Wisconsin Rapids here, and really enjoyed his energy, his ambition, and his opportunistic view about how River View can certainly be a leader in the, what they're referring to, the south central hub of service delivery, in the, really, the 200,000 residents in the area that they hope to serve through River View's doors. It was pretty eye-opening to see what we think is a community hospital serving our residents in the Southwood County community, but a much larger view that they see on the horizon for serving their populace. So very excited about what's on the horizon for them, and I'm sure, I'm certain we'll know more this summer as plans take shape related to their facility. And finally, tomorrow, I'll be on air taking your calls with Carl Hillkey for my monthly visit on the Morning Magazine. I'll also be joined by Joe Terry, our Director of Public Works, and Jeremy Sikler, our Airport Manager, to talk about a number of efforts that, some of which are on our Public Works agendas tonight. So that concludes my report. Item number seven this evening is the introduction of Reggie President Steve Anderson, and update from him on the Reggie progress. Unfortunately, Steve had an emergency that came up this afternoon and prevented him from being here, but I understand Adam has locked him in for March, and provided his schedule works, we'll have him at our March meeting. Looking forward to that introduction. I don't know if any of you had met Steve in any other capacities, but I know he's very anxious to get in front of the City Council to inform us and the public about the progress that Reggie has made in the area of economic growth. Item number eight is a report of the Planning Commission meeting held February 1. Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on February 1 in the first floor conference room here at City Hall. Members present included myself, Todd Furkey, Kelly Rosecrand, Shane Burkhart, Tim Burkhauser, and Joe Terry. Fran Aaron was absent. Others attending included Adam Taggins, JR Seaworth, Tom Raume, Scott Kellogg, Ann Kroll, Ken Porter, Jim Geniak, Sharon Vallas, and Tim Cullen. Item 1 was approval of the report from April 5, I'm sorry, October 5, Planning Commission report. There was a motion and a second to approve the report, and that motion carried. There are no other maps or plots received on item number 2. Item 3 was a public hearing on Plan 160010 TLC sign. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow an animated sign in the B2 General Commercial District. That subject property is located at 3331 8th Street South. Public hearing was called at 4:03 by myself, comments by JR Seaworth, as well as Scott Kellogg, Jim Geniak, Tom Raume, Ann Kroll, and Todd Furkey among city staff, and very important discussion, of which is captured in the minutes. I won't read all the aspects of the discussion. Then the public hearing was closed at 4:36 by myself. Item 4 was the action by Plan 160010 TLC sign. It was a motion by Furkey, second by Shane Burkhart, to approve the request motion regarding the plan, with the conditions proposed in the staff report, that the sign have either an automatic or manual dimming feature, and the feature shall be enabled. That motion carried 6-0. Adam Taggins offered a reminder of the special Planning Commission meeting on February 15, which occurred last evening at 4:00 PM, for an update on the zoning rewrite project. Item 6 was the motion to adjourn, which there was a motion and a second, and that motion carried, meeting adjourned at 4:50 PM, submitted by myself and Joe Terry, Secretary. With that, I entertain a motion on item 8, Report of the Planning Commission Meeting. Alderperson Furkey has a motion to approve. Is there a second? Alderperson Kellogg has a second. We'll move into discussion. Alderperson Raume?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, I should have brought it up probably at the, when we started with the minutes of the other meeting, but on that sign, in the meeting when it was voted on, it was a 5 to 3 vote, if I remember right. And I guess I, if we could just put that in the minutes, I mean, it passed, but it wasn't a unanimous vote.
Sure. So-
I just wanted to bring that up.
You're saying it really was Attachment Number 2, making that addition in there. Okay. I think we can accommodate that. Any other discussion? Obviously, this item, really, the entire meeting was disposable at the February 9 council meeting, so there isn't really any binding action, to my knowledge, at this meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. We'll move into item number 9, Standing Council Committee Reports. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held February 9.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, city staff, those here and watching at home. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:15 PM on Tuesday, February 9, 2016, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Other attendees are listed on file in the city clerk's office. Item 2, Request from Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater for Permission to Serve Intoxicating Liquor at Their Artie Party Event on March 19, 2016, in the Centrillius Center Riverwalk area and in the Studio Theater. There was a motion and a second to approve the request to serve intoxicating liquor at their event. Item 3, Consider a Special Events Application from the Southwood County YMCA for a three-mile run on the morning of Saturday, June 18, 2016, in conjunction with the Cranberry Blossom Festival. The run would start at Witter Field, down Mead Street to 2nd Street South, and over the Grand Avenue Bridge, then along the trail, along 1st Avenue South to the River View Expressway Bridge, to 3rd Street South, to Mead Street, and back to Witter Field. Please note the dates of the event, and run route has changed from what is on the application. The application includes A, closure of Lincoln Street from Peach Street to Chestnut Street from approximately 8:00 AM to 10:30 AM, allowing local resident access; B, establishment of a runner's lane and assistance with runner crossings along the route identified above; C, food vending availability, para sandwiches, fruit, and drinks, para. Motion and a second to approve the events application from the Southwood County YMCA for a three-mile run on June 18 in conjunction with the Cranberry Blossom Festival. Item 4, Review and Possible Action on a Street Department Tractor Backhoe Replacement Bits. Motion is second to purchase a JD tractor contingent upon the equipment passing the onsite inspection of the city to ensure it meets the expectations, otherwise to come back to the committee for alternate purchases. Item 5, Consider a Recommendation from Statewide Services to Deny a Claim from Gary Romanowski for Damages to Their Vehicle. Motion and second to deny a claim from Gary Romanowski for damages to his vehicle. Item 6, Consider a Request to Increase the Rates in the Fair Structure for River City Cab. Para this item will be reported to the March 15, 2016 council meeting, which will include a public hearing. Motion and a second to approve an increase in fare charges for River City Cab. Item 7, Beverage Operator License Applications. Motion is second to approve the beverage operator license applications as presented. Item 8 was Audit of the Bills. There was a motion and a second to approve check number 62149 to check number 99012. Item 9, Adjournment. It was moved and seconded to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 5:55 PM, and with that, I would entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
I have a motion to approve by Dolan. Is there a second? Second by Tao. Any discussion? Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. We'll move into the next item on our agenda. Item 9B is the Public Works Committee meeting held February 9. Alderperson Raume?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on February 9, 2016, in the first-floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. The list of others present is on file in the Clerk's Office. Meeting was called, item number 1, the meeting was called to order. Item 2, the DPW report was reviewed. The report is available online. Item 3, Evaluate Intersection Options on East Grand Avenue at Lincoln Street. The Engineering Department is waiting on the final report, but preliminary traffic forecast suggests that three traffic control options would work at this intersection. Signalized, always stop, or roundabout. Each option has pros and cons, but more detailed information will be available with the final report, which will be shared with the committee upon receiving it. Item 4, Consider Chapter 11.06, Parent 7 driveway width variance request from First Congregational Church at 311 2nd Street South. The Engineering Department has reviewed the request to remove 30 feet of curb head between two existing driveways to make one opening that is 80 feet wide. Staff recommended allowing the variance due to low traffic, narrow roadway, and institutional use. There was a motion and a second to approve the variance, and that motion carried. Item 5, Review Request from Aspirous River View Hospital to Replace Lighting Fixtures on Dewey Street. Doug Shainock from the hospital presented the request. Engineering Department and WWLC staff reviewed the request and concurred with the proposed fixtures. There's a motion and a second to allow Aspirous to replace fixtures on Dewey Street at the hospital's expense. The motion carried. Item 6, Review Draft Policy on Sanitary Lateral Replacements with the right-of-way, within the right-of-way. The policy was presented and is planned to be placed on next month's agenda for committee action. Item 7, Review Assessment Ordinance as it pertains to the 2nd Avenue South Project from the Expressway to Gainer Avenue. The interpretation of the assessment ordinance to not charge special assessments on 2nd Avenue South due to non-accessible items and DOT cost sharing was presented. Item 8, Consider Amending Chapter 27 Parking to Include No Parking on Alley. This issue became apparent due to some past and more recent parking issues on the alleys. The current ordinance does not specifically regulate parking on alleys. However, alleys are narrow and do not provide enough room to park and allow other neighbors wishing to use the alley to pass by. Hence the proposed ordinance, and that's Attachment 1. Property owners at 250 17th Avenue South discussed their concerns with parking restrictions and lack of city maintenance on unimproved alleys. They stated they have been performing the mowing and snowing removal of the alley for years, and were recently issued two parking tickets within 25 hours. Discussions followed, including possible police and fire department concerns, right-of-way vacations, and improvement of the alley. There was a motion and a second to amend Chapter 27 Parking to Include No Parking on All Alley. Motion carried. Item 9, Review 32nd Street and 25th Avenue Speed Studies. Both speed studies were reviewed. The report findings and city engineer recommendation for 25th Avenue is to increase the speed limit to 35 miles per hour from Gainer Avenue to the railroad tracks north of West Grand Avenue due to the reasonable and prudent ability of 85% of the drivers to travel at a speed above the posted speed limit. It is important to note that 95% of the vehicles were traveling over 30 miles per hour during the study period. This item is proposed to be brought back for committee approval next month. I'll just add in here, I think we're going to do that in April, because we're going to have a bigger discussion, I think, on a couple other items, so we're going to do this one in April. The 32nd Street study is not yet complete, however, preliminary data suggests the current speed limit north of Washington Street is acceptable, whereas the portion south of Washington Street may need to be increased. The 85 percentile speed range from 40 to 49 miles per hour, with 99% of the vehicles near Chestnut Street and Peach Street intersections traveling at speeds above 35 miles per hour. Conversations with the town of Grand Rapids need to occur before bringing a final recommendation back to the committee next month. Item 10, The 2016 Proposed Construction Schedule was reviewed. Item 11, Discuss Recycling Truck Replacement, Including Possibility of Changing to Single Stream Recycling. The Recycling Service Report dated February 2016 was presented by Joe Terry at the DPW. The report identifies the current recycling truck is at the end of the service life and needs to be replaced. Cost analysis was done on a replacement truck, and pros and cons were presented related to automated recycling and single-stream collection. The report recommendation is that the city begins taking steps to implement an automated recycling system, along with outlining next steps and proposed implementation timeline. Alderperson Koeth expressed concerns with bins and carts being stolen, which brought about discussions about radio frequency identification, tags, and technologies that are available to document collection activities. Alderperson Raume asked about the cart sizes, videos of automated trucks in action, and disclosure of the recommendation to staff. The carts are proposed to be 95 gallons, and demos will be brought to the next committee meeting so that members can see them firsthand. Alderperson Furkey asked why the city would want to own the carts. It was noted that ownership of the carts would allow consistency of all cart sizes, colors, models, and whatever, so that the automated truck could easily collect the carts in the field. This item will be brought back to the committee next month for more discussion and action. Item 12, The Referral List was reviewed with the following items removed from 2016, it'd be items 12 and 16. Item 13, There was a motion and a second to adjourn. The motion carried. The meeting was adjourned at 7:55 PM, and with that, Your Honor, I'd move for adoption of the report.
I have a motion to approve the Public Works Committee report by Raume. Is there a second? Second by Koeth. We'll move into discussion. Alderperson Kellogg, you're first.
Number 4, I-
Make sure your mic is on, Scott, please.
On number 4, I made the motion to accept the removal of the curb, but I think my motion stated that it had no expense to the city, if I recall. And I don't know why we would have to have that expense if the church would like to do it, just like if a business wants a curb removed and we approve it, that business would, would be, I, in my opinion, would be expected to pay for the cost, so I would like to amend that if we could.
Alderperson, or Joe, want to go?
Sure. I think in this case, the motion is, was to approve the variance only, and there was no implication that there'd be any city responsibility, other than the variance request to have a driveway opening that was larger than standard.
So there would be no cost to the city?
There'd be no cost to the city, correct.
Okay, fine. Sounds like, clear.
All right. Any further discussion on the report? As mentioned, a number of these items will require a lot of public outreach, from recycling to some of the speed studies that have been done, maybe some other items, so make an effort to obviously join, have Joe join me on the radio tomorrow, as well as other groups that you might want to engage, just to continue to educate. I think it would be a good thing to do. Any further discussion on the reports? 10:00 AM, 10 to 11. You can livestream it on your computer or tune into your radio, whichever you prefer. All right. Or you can call in, too. See no further discussion. We have a motion to approve in a second. We'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Item C, 9C is Human Resources Committee meeting held February 8. Alderperson Furkey. Laura Seaworth.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met February 8 at 4:00 PM in the third-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Jesse Austin, Beth Bukinowitz, Alderperson Steve Koeth, Tom Lux, Alderperson Tom Raume, Sue Shell, and Mayor Zach Ruing. Item number 2 was to discuss and improve reclassification of the Assistant Multimedia Specialist Position. A motion was made by Alderperson Kellogg and seconded by Alderperson Furkey to approve a reclassification of the Assistant Multimedia Specialist Position to a Grade III. That motion passed. Item number 3 was to discuss and approve a job description for the elected city clerk position. A motion was made by Alderperson Furkey and seconded by Alderperson Stack to approve the job description as presented, with minor changes of will and coordinates on Page 2. That motion passed. You can see Attachment 1. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderperson Furkey and seconded by Alderperson Stack, and that meeting adjourned at 5:14 PM. With this, I would put forth this report for your adoption. Thank you.
We have a motion to approve by Furkey. Is there a second? Second by Dolan. We'll move into discussion. Is there any discussion? Alderperson Raume?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'd just like to hold item 3 out for a separate vote.
Okay. The request has been to hold item 3 out, so it leaves us with the balance of report number 2. Any discussion on item 2? Seeing no discussion on item 2, we'll move into a vote on 1, 2, and 4. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We'll move into item number 3 and move into discussion. Alderperson Raume, did you want to discuss your request to hold it out first?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to vote no on this, on the job description for the elected city clerk's position. I just, I don't, we got a packet of a whole bunch of things. I just got it last night. At the end of the day, I think it was, I came in and got it out of the mailbox. I would like, if we could, to hold this over so people could read all that's in this thing. Like, there's other jobs that are in there, too, and that's not what this is about, this item, but I just think that there, some of those strike me as that they shouldn't be the job of the city clerk. There are, let's see, things that, items that deal with safety, I think, and that, you know, I guess, and the changing of the words. The two words, it was from develops to coordinates, and maintains an emergency preparedness plan for City Hall. And then it coordinates ELC training and serves as the ELC manager. I just, I don't see where that's the city clerk's job. So, and there's other things in here that- in here that I think maybe if every, maybe everybody's read all the stuff, I don't know. Getting mine late last night, I wonder if everybody had a chance to go over the copy here, so that's all for now, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderperson Koeth, you're next.
I know, I was at the Human Resources Committee meeting, and we discussed a lot of this stuff. After the meeting, I did have an opportunity to talk with some people on this, and I got the information I requested. This job description to the city clerk's office isn't something new from what I gathered on the materials that I went over. It's not something that we sat down in twenty sixteen and thought that we were just gonna apply to the clerk's office. The other material that was in our packets show that the city clerk's office actually had a description that was put in effect in November two thousand and five, and along that, it appears that the city attorney, mayor, and at the time when we had a city treasurer, that those positions were all updated at that time. But what I'd really like to do is, I don't mean to put our acting city clerk on the spot, but I'd like to ask Paul if he'd like to go up to the podium and, and talk about this job description and, and see what he thinks about it.
Alderperson Stack, did you have a quick comment?
Just a quick comment. He is not our acting city clerk, he is our election specialist.
That is correct. Thanks for the clarification.
I want that, to be sure that everyone here on the floor knows that. He is not our acting clerk. His sole hiring was for the purpose of an election specialist to help us with these primaries that are coming up and elections later.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, they, the two have been given clerk authority in effect to act as the city clerk in matters that need to be signed and et cetera, that we granted them at the last, the last meeting. Steve, do you still want to ask an opinion of Paul as an election specialist on the job description?
I'd, I'd like to hear from the clerk's office if Paul or Sue have anything to say on it as to what, what their feelings are for what should come out of the clerk's office.
I guess they'd put the ball in their court if they wish to do so. I would say, and maybe defer to HR in terms of, you know, sort of the role and maybe the modifications related to current, I guess I'm trying to balance sort of the appropriateness of trying to, to ask the current position holders to respond to a job description that they didn't really, weren't hired under, I guess is my point. Long way of making that point. Beth, did you maybe wanna?
No, I would agree. He is the elections coordinator, and I'm not really sure if Paul has even had a chance to look at the most recent job description that went to the HR committee last week, so I'm not sure he would be comfortable speaking to that. And I think his focus really has been on the elections for the most part, but again, you know, signature-wise, there have probably been some things that, that have come both him and Sue's way to, to sign, but I'm sure he would not be familiar with most of what's in the job description here.
Steve, does that satisfy your concern? I guess, did you have maybe a specific concern or question either directed at HR's way or, or city staff on that?
I guess I was just looking to see if the city clerk's office did have a chance to look over this and if they had thoughts on it.
Okay. Yeah. Sue, did you have anything to comment on it? Sure. Okay, sure, come on. Terry wants you to state your name.
Okay, Sue, this is Sue, I'm Sue Bravick, working in the clerk's office. I guess I haven't had a lot of chance to look this over real in-depth, but I can say, just from the little bit that I see here, I think overall, this looks pretty accurate as far as what I have done in the past year. Some things that I have not done, and maybe the former clerk has done, but that I haven't, would be the, you know, bond, or it says processes bond and note issues, and especially the one acts as administrator and trustee for health insurance. I don't have any, I haven't done anything with that at all. So those are just a couple things that jumped out at me real quick, just as I was looking that over, but at least I haven't read it thoroughly through, so.
Thanks, Sue. Anything further? Steve, or any other buddy for that matter, while Sue's up at the podium? Okay. Thank you. Okay, move into further discussion. Steve, did you have anything else to say on the, on the matter? No. Okay. Move into other discussion. Seeing no further discussion, did I, I didn't have a motion on the ballot. Did I have a motion? I'm sorry. Thank you. They've got the motion in their, in their minutes. Can you read, who, who made the motion for our benefit? Motion, motion by Furkey, seconded by Dolan. Is that where it was? I'll just make sure we've got it captured. Okay. To approve item number three, which is the discussion and approval of a job description for the elected city clerk position. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay. We'll move into item number ten, miscellaneous reports. Item one is McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees held November eighteenth and November twentieth. Item two is the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority held November eighteenth, December thirtieth, and January twenty-seventh. Item three is the Southwood County Airport meeting, Commission meeting held January seventh and January fifteenth. Item four is the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Monthly Report for January. Item five, the Police and Fire Commission Report held January thirteenth. Item six, the Wisconsin Rapids, Wisconsin Rapids Water Works and Lighting Commission Regular Meetings held December ninth and January thirteenth. Item seven, the Water Works and Lighting Commission Special Meetings held December twenty-second and January twentieth. And item eight, Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Report for January. Item nine, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held February third. And item ten, the City of Wisconsin Rapids Ethic Board, Ethics Board two thousand and fifteen year-end report. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding the miscellaneous reports?
Motion to approve.
Okay. We'll come back. Alderperson Dolan? Motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Furkey. Alderperson Rayom, go ahead. Discussion?
And maybe nobody here has the answer, I'm not sure. Police and Fire Commission, just a question it is. Item six, and that's a setting date for entry-level firefighter, paramedic, interview in the process. Couple dates, June seventh and eighth, is that still the dates? And how many, or what number are we looking for? Does, does anybody know?
I don't, looking for the report. Item six?
Six, it is.
Scott, do you have anything on that, or Beth?
There's not a specified number that they're looking for. What happens is every January, we go through the Chippewa Valley Technical Recruitment Process. They run our CPAT, our physical agility testing, and then they go through an application process there. We vet those applications, myself, the fire chief, and the administrative assistant that works with the Police and Fire Commission, then forward those applications on to the Police and Fire Commission. They set up the interviews, and it's, it's kind of all in their hands at that point. There's really no hiring taking place until we actually have a vacancy, so at this juncture, I don't know that we have any planned vacancies or retirements coming up in the next year, but we have to go through this process annually with Chippewa Valley Tech. Yes, yeah.
All right. Alderperson Kellogg?
I have a question. Is the narcotic detective position filled? And if a person's moving up, what's the process of replacing the patrolman or whomever would be taking that position?
The narcotics, narcotics position has been filled, and the next step would be bringing in an entry-level law enforcement officer. There is, with the assistance of Human Resources, a conditional offer that's been put together, and they'll need to meet, this candidate will need to meet specific criteria within the conditional offer, and once that's done, then we can begin discussing a start date.
Any further discussion on the reports? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number eleven, nothing listed under referral of communications to committees. Are there any other? Alderperson Stack?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a referral this evening to Human Resources. In researching the question of an elected or appointed clerk, I came across a meeting from Tuesday, March sixth of two thousand and seven, when Mary Jo Carson served as mayor. And to quote, Mayor Carson presented her appointment of Shane Blazer as interim city clerk to replace Vern Borth, who is retiring during the elected term. So that was two thousand and seven, the next term would be two thousand and eight. Mayor Carson went on to note that advertisement for the position yielded eleven applicants, of whom three were interviewed by the mayor, the Human Resources Director, the city treasurer, the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city clerk secretary. It was moved by Vrginsky, seconded by Young, to approve the mayor's appointment. Roll call resulted in six ayes and one nay. Mr. Blazer outlined his background for the council. We have here a precedent set some nine years ago, in which Vern Borth retired and the city advertised for the position, having received eleven applicants and then reviewing three, Shane Be, Shane Blazer being the selectee. What I would like to see, the Human Resource Council, Human Resource Committee, and the city be prepared to do at either the last April meeting, which I would prefer, is at, in the interim until our March meeting of the Human Resources Committee, that an after, advertisement be drafted. I would think, Beth, you would still have information on hand, and from that, we place the city, placed within the paper, and other media, for example, the Wisconsin municipality, that the City of Wisconsin Rapids would like to hire, would like to appoint an interim city clerk to replace Shane Blazer. I was not on the council at that time, Mayor Patrick was, but I did talk with Shane and I did talk with Borth, Vern Borth, about it, because the question came up in some reading that I did about hired, and also, it was pointed out to me, no, it was appointment by the mayor at her direction and her responsibility. So I believe that does set for us a precedent that when Shane Blazer retired and said, submitted his retirement, and we missed it as a council, we should have been advertising for an interim city clerk, which would have not needed an election specialist perhaps, and that there are people in the community, knowing that we had the retirement of Shane Blazer taking place, who would have had an interest in that interim city clerk position. So I would like the Human Resources Committee to take this up as a matter of business in their March meeting, and be prepared to have an advertisement made for a city clerk to fill the term of Shane Blazer, and that person would stand in that interim position until next year, in December of two thousand and seventeen, when he would, if he interested, he or she would like to run for the position, at which time, all the things that are necessary could be met. When Shane ran, it was on a two, two-year position, so joining in two thousand and seven meant that in the fall of two thousand and seven, his name was presented to the people of the city as a candidate for city clerk. I do not know if he had opposition, but I'd like to air this and get this cleaned up and out of the way in time for the two thousand and seventeen filing of papers and the two thousand and eighteen spring election. And we put this, put this troubled path to rest. It seems to have been knocking around here for four months or so, December, November, January, February, and I'd like to bring close to it. And this precedent action provides us, in addition to, of course, the people who voted and indicated they would like to have a city clerk position elected, would put this to, to rest. And I'd like Mr. Furkey to schedule it with his March Human Resources meeting, which I think would be about the first of March. Our meeting as a council would be on the fifteenth. Would Mr. Furkey be willing to schedule this as a matter of business at the Human Resources Committee meeting of March first?
Before Alderperson Furkey responds, I'd like to interject a couple of comments, and I'll deem the discussion appropriate, given the fact that item nine C was on our agenda this evening related to the job description for the city clerk position. Excuse me, a couple of reasons, I think, Jim, that, that I'd like to add to your thought process, and I agree with many of your points. However, I will call out that any interested individual that was wishing to serve in the position of city clerk had to know if they were going to be appointed to a position that was going to be an appointment, or had to seek it as an elected capacity. We would have really had a narrow group of applicants who would have left their positions or maybe sought the position if they were, if they weren't employed, not knowing if they had to run for office or if they were going to stand an appointment that would follow normal HR-appointed procedure. So that's the first consideration. We wouldn't, it was inappropriate to advertise for anybody to seek the position, not knowing if the council wanted to maintain it as an elected position or convert it to an appointed position. So I wanna point that consideration out, because I think whoever might be speaking to you on this issue might be forgetting that detail.
The council chose to make an elected position at February's meeting.
Correct, but tonight was the first, the closure on the job description issue, and anybody that I want to consider for an appointment should know what job they're signing up for, even if it's still an elected capacity, because it's, it's inappropriate for me to say, well, you serve as city clerk, but not know what you're going to do, or how that person or the function of the office without a job description. And now that the council's decided to make the modifications to the previous job description, it's appropriate to now begin the process to recruit applicants for the position.
And I don't want to see that lost between now and then.
Okay. That, and that's fair, and as you pointed out, Mayor Carson had a process of which she chose to follow a precedent that you referred to. I wouldn't say it's a precedent, it was a choice, and it's a choice that I will have to make in, in pursuing the filling of this position. I will share, though, I intend to follow a very similar position to that. I don't believe, and I know the city clerk, or city attorney has something to say, but, you know, those are, that's sort of the role of, and the, the purpose of the position of the mayor on, on this appointment.
But at that time, in two thousand and seven, it was an elected position. And the mayor made the appointment, correct. And the job is advertised.
At the discretion of the mayor, at the discretion of the mayor. And it's my plan to, it's my plan to. I, I don't have any intention of not making it an equal opportunity for, for interested parties to submit a resume or some interest in the position. Alderperson Rayom, I think you might have been next. I wasn't seeing who was pointing out over here, unless maybe, city attorney.
Right, this really shouldn't be discussed, it's not on the agenda. If you were gonna make a referral, and then whether the HR committee wants to take that up, or, you know, however the mayor feels about it, but we shouldn't really be discussing it, because it's not, not on the agenda, so. This, the agenda I'm right now is to make a referral. You've, you've requested a referral, and so the chair will have to act on it or not.
Chair will consider the referral.
You can ask a question about the process.
The council procedures are-
Well, you just explained the process, so my question would be, why has it gotta go to Human Resources? It's the mayor's decision.
I think in the past, it's been the mayor's appointment, and it actually has, I believe it has gone to, to committee and then to council, just because the council, or the HR committee is a standing committee that does human resources and personnel, and I believe-
I'm sorry.
Right.
I just wanted to get the order of that. It would go to the mayor, goes to HR, who brings it to the council. At least that's the way I understand it.
Any further questions, maybe on process? Jim, I appreciate you raising the point, appreciate the city attorney calling out, sort of, it's not on the agenda for discussion, but it was something I intended to point out when we had the closure of item C. out when we had the closure of item C, so. Alderperson Raum, did you have a question?
Yeah, a may, a short comment.
Question, not a comment?
Well, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're following the rules.
If, if, if what, okay. This may be a referral, I'm just asking if it can be done, okay? Can we, this for Sue, can we have an election? A special election, or there will be an election, possibly, I think, I think Wisconsin moved up to August from September, when, if there were primaries and that to vote for the, could we be put on there, or could we have a special election, and what would be timeframe even before that, for an elected, de-elected clerk?
Right.
For the rest of the term, and I guess that'd be my, if, if we could do that, Eric, something I'd like to put that on for the council to consider as a referral.
Right, you, you could make a referral to, to, to have a, an election for that clerk position prior to the end of the current term, which would be April or May 1 of 2018, I believe.
Yeah.
It's too late, obviously, to do it the spring. I believe you, you could do a fall, it would be the general, unless you had, you know, more than three people running, and then it could be in August. I, I'm thinking it's, it's supposed to be in the general, though, I guess I'm not sure on that. I guess you're asking, should you, could you actually do it in the August primary, even though there might only be two, you know, two candidates or something? But you could make a referral for a special election, and then your, your choices more than likely would be fall of 2016, spring of 2017, or just wait until the spring of 2018.
Okay, so I anticipate further discussion between the two of you on that item, or possibly a referral to the body, it seems, or a committee of the whole, if that's the appropriate direction. Further referrals? Alderperson Kellogg?
I know a few months ago, we talked, I don't know how many months, maybe five or six, about a nuisance ordinance, and I'm considering what the status is of that. I know there's some businesses or situations where the police are called quite often, and they usurp our resources of our city, and I think that's an interesting concept to entertain, and I don't know what the status is of that, or where it went, or if it just died in some committee, but I'd like to resurface that and just revisit that as a potential issue in our city.
And I appreciate that, that comment, I think we had talked about maybe putting it in a committee of the whole, if not, discussion maybe in March, if you, if there's a referral list of items, I think that's an appropriate body to maybe bring it before we bring it direct to the council, or bring it direct to the full city, that's full city council? Okay, so I think, I know there's been internal discussion on that subject, so there has been activity, it's just a matter of when it's going to be ready to be cooked to the council level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So possibly then, I know we'll have aquatics and maybe some reports even for that purpose at a committee of the whole as well. Anything else from anybody, referral of communications? Go ahead.
I don't want to back up, but I just want to make it clear, because I know we all get a lot of calls, and about these job descriptions, which, you know, I just want to make a point, and I know we talked about a little bit, they've been in place since 2005, so, or 2007 for some, so it's not a new thing, so I just want to make that point, because I know we all get a lot of calls on it.
Echoed Steve's comment from earlier.
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with whether it's elected or appointed, it just is. And I want to thank Beth for getting us the information.
On Friday.
Uh, before that.
That's when I got it.
I had it before that, so.
Any further referral of communications, seeing and hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn? And a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you all for your attention this evening, have a good rest of your evening.